I called a meeting, the October 3rd, 2017, Lake Mills City Council meeting. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
Mr. Fritsch.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Fields.
Here.
And Mr. Knickel previously informed me that he be unavailable for this evening's meetings.
Okay. Corrections and/or approval of the City Council minutes of September 19th, 2017. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
And I just want to point out that that's two sets of minutes.
Oh, good point.
For that, so.
Yes, it's not on the regular thing, but you're right.
For the same date, it's the work.
Yes, so we have a work session at minutes. Can we do them together?
If that's what the motion is.
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion is to approve both the work session and the regular meeting for September 19th. And the second approved?
Who was my second?
You were.
Yep.
Okay. All right, now we can call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Thank you.
That takes us to item number four, correspondence. Someone like to jump in on that one?
Sure, why not?
Yeah, might as well.
So, I've received a lot of calls and emails concerning the Brewster Drive apartment buildings, and seems that there's a little confusion out there. The builder is building luxury apartments, and the builder has not made any, what do I want to put it? He's not made any effort to try to go through HUD to get approval for low-income housing, and there's no plans for any of that that we know of right now. There's no trailer parks being built out there. Let's see what other rumors there were flowing around. Those are a lot of the big ones out there. And the other rumor, I guess the last rumor was, it was put on hold because we were thinking about allowing them to have low-income housing out there. And all of those are definitely not true. The builder's planning on luxury apartments, and the builder's on hold right now for paperwork with the city builder and with the city. And that's the only reason the stuff is on hold right now. So if you're hearing rumors that we're building low-income housing, and you've heard this from us here, you can go back to the people and let them know that is not the plan. So.
Interesting, because I thought we addressed that in the last meeting.
We did address it, yeah. And some of the other things that they should know is, from the information I've gathered, the builder would have to go to Housing and Urban Development to get the paperwork started to even go through the process of getting approved for low-income housing. Then HUD would come to the Plan Commission, we'd do public hearings, and if, for whatever reason, the Plan Commission approved it, it would move on to the City Council, and then it would go through three readings, and it could be shot down at any time. And even if the City Council does approve it, it still has to go back to HUD, from my understanding, for their final approval. So it would take a lot of, a lot of legwork to make something like that happen. It's not just something that comes to the city and the city says yes or no this is going to happen. So, yeah, if you have questions about it, by all means, call. But right now, there's no plans for low-income housing or trailer parks out in that area.
And there never has been any discussion about that, to my knowledge. So I don't know where that started. I know some people wanted to know if there would be, I think with hopes that they, you know, could use it, but it's never been a part of this plan.
Right.
Thank you for clearing the air on that. Okay. Any other, anyone else?
I received correspondence from a constituent with concerns about when and how you can be placed on the waiting list for boat launches and parking for their boats. And I'm asking that the city administration look at what the current policy says and see if we need to revamp it at all. So that's where that's at.
Okay.
I did receive some correspondence about South Ferry Drive, about the speeds down there by Barrows Beach, and what are some of our options, maybe slow that down a little bit. And also another inquiry about the city siren going off at 6 o'clock all the time.
[laughing]
And then I did attend the energy discussion at Jefferson last week, Thursday. So that was fairly interesting, about the state of energy in the country and where they see it's going.
If you have anything from that meeting, please share it with Steve.
Yep.
And then he can bring it to us if it's something the council should know as a whole.
Good.
Thank you for attending.
Yep, no problem.
Anyone else have? Okay, I have a couple things. One, I received notification that the, to remind the council, but also everybody in the city, that the LD Fargo Public Library will celebrate its 115th anniversary this Saturday, October 7th, with a reception from 10:00 in the morning to noon. They are inviting the people in Lake Mills to join them and have coffee and cake and meet your friends and neighbors and look at the historical displays that have been put up at the library. This was, the invitation was extended by Vicky Wickliffe, the president of the Friends of the Library. It's this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 at the library. Also, just came across our desks today, the schedule for the, and maybe Steve was going to pick this up too, but I'm going to steal his thunder here. The city has scheduled October 9th as the beginning of leaf pickup. And I want to mention, in your electric bill that you got, there was a, I don't know what color is this, coral? Coral color insert, very nicely done by the Rock Lake Improvement Association, talking about what to do with your leaves and what not to do with your leaves. I think every city in the state must do it different. That's what I've come up. And so if you're new to the city, if you would take a look at your electric bill, it doesn't, even a visual on here, we do not put our leaves in the gutter. We put our leaves on the tree lawn. And the reason is, is because if it goes in the gutter and we have a rain, then those little happy leaves go floating down and into the lake. And it has a very detrimental effect on the lake. I want to thank the Rock Lake Improvement Association for the very timely and well-done letter, and ask that everyone in the city, please remember to keep your leaves on the tree lawn. Also, the fall brush pickup will be October 18th through October 25th. That is, hmm, is that from Wednesday to Wednesday? Oh, it is, okay. I'm not used to a Wednesday, I guess. Anyway, so Wednesday, the 18th to October 25th, Wednesday. And there will be an article in the paper about this, and probably in the website of the paper as well. You are asked to cut your brush into manageable sizes and set it so that the ends of the brush is in the same direction as the traffic. So if your road, if you're on, the road is here, the cars are going here, the end of your brush should be facing the same way cars go down your street. And then they come in with this machine, and they stick the ends in, and it grinds it all up and takes it away. So that will be October 18th through the 25th. They also will pick up brush, if it's on a separate pile, with their leaf picker-upper in some, at some point in that same area. That's what I understood. Am I wrong? I read that on something in the mail today.
They don't want brush in with the leaves, because the brush tears up the leaf rack.
Okay. So they pick that up separately in some other way?
Yes.
Okay.
Normally, you can, you either have the brush pickup, that's a regular fall and spring pickup, and then a Christmas tree pickup, or you can schedule a brush pickup.
But that costs money.
But that costs money.
Mm-hmm.
And those are the three options.
So if you want to do it and not pay money, you do it between the 18th and the 25th, Wednesdays. Okay. It will be in the paper, so if I didn't make it clear, check the paper.
It's also on our website, too.
Oh, and on the website, yes. Okay. Let's see. Um, good. I think, does anyone else have anything else?
Yeah. I attended a meeting of the library, the regional library area. Found it very interesting and enlightening.
And that was with other libraries being represented?
The whole region.
Okay, so.
Covers quite an area.
Pardon me?
Covers quite an area.
Okay. All righty. Good. Anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing else, moving on on the agenda, two. Questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet on the podium as provided. And unless our editor of the paper wants to make a comment, which doesn't look like he does, we don't have anyone here to make a comment. So I will move on to the next agenda item. That is the city manager's report. Mr. Wilkie, would you like to take it from there?
Yes. The police report for August was attached to the agenda. Received this. It's a letter from the EMS telling us how much they've increased the cost for EMS from last year to this year. Ended up being 13 percent. Which has been incorporated into the budget already, I didn't mention that. Here's a letter from the county telling us about the local road improvement program, which Betsy and maybe Dwayne will be attending next week, or no, Thursday.
Thursday.
Here's a letter from Johns telling us that they are increasing their garbage and recycling cost to us this year by 1.2 percent, which was a cost we had covered in the budget already, so. I wanted to bring this up. This article is relevant to our budget this year as a discussion item, so I might recommend that you read this article. I assume you all get the municipality?
Mm-hmm.
That's the innovative solutions to housing in Howard. You might recognize a proposal in there from, that's in our budget. Dark stores is again a big issue. I don't know, did you get your e-letter from the league requesting that you contact your senators?
I didn't.
I recommend that you do that. That's very important, and I know that that it will be important to contact them, because I know the other side will be contacting them. You mentioned leaf pickup. Brewster Drive is down to just a couple items on the punch list, so it should be done here shortly. So if you want to drive down and see what it looks like, it's a substantial improvement.
You're talking about the existing Brewster Drive, not the subdivision?
Right. The existing Brewster Drive was under construction this year, from the Arbor Creek subdivision up to Tyranina Park Road. And it was a area where we put in some new curb, all new sidewalks and new pavement and new stormwater. East Lake Park Place is again under reconstruction, a lot of rumors about that one. The city is not paying to rebuild the street. The city is paying for what it costs to build the street to the original standard, and that's it. So if someone tells you that we're paying for the street twice, tell them that they haven't been following the contract negotiations very closely. Not that they could, but. Street maintenance work. The oil and chip is done. The milling overlays will start, so we sent out alert sent notices, we've delivered hand flyers to all the neighborhoods, so like Ferry Drive, Prospect Street, Louise Pope, Circle Drive, several of those streets, people want to take notice here. You'll want to look at the website, the city's website, under construction and maintenance projects, to see if someone calls that you know that where they're talking about what's going on. There'll probably be milling here in the next couple days, which means they'll take off the existing asphalt. And then the city crews will probably go in and repair any soft spots. And then probably next week or the week after, they'll come in and lay new asphalt. The dam is down to four punch list items, so we're hoping that we have that done here The Mangan development, to a certain extent, when we said the project was on hold, it was on hold for water and sewer permits and approval of the final billing elevations and sidewalk construction and street construction plans. They had the grading plan done, that was approved. They put up $210,000 in a letter of credit. We're currently now waiting for a $1.3 million letter of credit, along with the developers, the signed developers agreement. We've provided them with an owner's letter on the water. We haven't approved the sanitary sewer, the street, or the billing elevations yet. So they're kind of working through it in a piecemeal fashion, but they have put up, before we let them go any further, they will put up the letter of credit. South Main Street, the action is really starting to heat up. Wisconsin Energy's, we, will be putting in new gas main here in the next month. The city of Lake Mills will be installing new underground electric, along with new underground cable for Charter and new underground telephone for Frontier. So you'll probably be seeing a lot of work actually starting on South Main Street. It's not at the street construction, but it's all the utilities preparing for the We are down to the final days of the property acquisition, so we are getting our reports ready to submit to get our money back from the state of Wisconsin. Last check was about $365,000, but I anticipate it's going to be over $400,000 before it's all done. The library elevator contract has been executed, and we're just waiting for the pre-con to start. So that'll be coming up here shortly. The library annex is gone.
Any problems with the demolition?
No, not that I know of. We're now to the point where we're looking at grading and seating. There's some questions about secondary access in the parking lot at the library. We're evaluating those things. I think that we probably would be better off with the cross-access easement with the bank than using that, so, but we won't do all the final grading and seating until we have that worked out. Lead service laterals, 16 done, 40 to go.
That we know of.
That we know of. This year. That means that they're popping holes in every street in the city. So if you get complaints about that we just put down a brand-new pavement and they're cutting a hole into it, that's because we had no clue. It's like calling the lottery. Someone decides they want to replace their lateral, and they don't tell us until yesterday, and we've had that street repair under contract since last April. You know, that's the way it's going to fall. So as hard as we tried, it's not something that we're going to be able to control. We thought maybe that it would be more consistent with like South Main Street and Mulberry and some of the older areas of town where we had already replaced our portion of the lead lateral service, but that hasn't been the case. It's been more hit and miss, kind of driven by neighborhood concerns or the need to sell We'll talk about the strategic planning session, or the goal-setting session at the end of the meeting here.
Right.
So that'll be taken care of. We are working with Hammerhead, which is a business in an industrial park, and they want to do some, they want to be able to do demonstrations of their product on our, for the people that they're working with on our infrastructure. And they have some real interesting products. They're able to line storm sewers, sanitary mains, and water mains in place. So we're looking at some projects that we can do with them, and we're coordinating And that should cover it. Anything else?
Steve?
For the work on South Main, are they going to be directional boring for them utilities, or are they going to be open excavations?
No, they'll all be directional boring.
All directional boring?
We will do their own, and then the others will be done by peeper. So there will probably be some open digging, because you have to make certain connections, and you have to, as you know, they, the directional bore, they have to have a beginning point and an ending point. And some of the laterals for both electric and sewer will, or not, electric and gas may need some open, but most of it'll be underground bored.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you for the report. And that takes us to item number seven, acceptance of minutes of planning commission, June 27th, 2017, and library board, August 21st, 2017. They will be accepted and placed on file. Okay. And that takes us to item eight, council business miscellaneous licenses. Ms. Steve, would you read the name of our current license request?
We have a tavern operator's license application for Olivia Von Blomberg.
Okay. There's a very motion to grant the tavern operator's license to Olivia Blomberg.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Seconded by Mr. Fritsch. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance 1180, the 2018 general fund budget, first reading.
Ordinance 1180, 2018 general government budget and tax levy ordinance. An ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operations of the general government and debt service funds of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the year 2018. The city council, the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordinate as follows. Section 1, there is hereby appropriated, or the receipts of the city of Lake Mills for the year 2018, including monies received from the general property tax levy to the various purposes specified in the budget presented, excuse me, herewith for the purposes therein stated, the following amounts. Summary of adopted general government budget for 2018. Total revenues, 2017 budget and 2017 estimate, $5,22,500. 2018 proposed, $5,162,400, for a 2.8 percent change. Total expenditures, 2017 budget and 2017 estimate, $5,22,300. 2018 proposed, $5,163,800, 2.8 percent change. 2018 debt service, total expenses, 2017 budget and 2017 estimate, $1,325,500. 2018 proposed, $1,481,200, 11.75 percent change. Total revenues, 2017 budget and 2017 estimate, $1,325,500. 2018 proposed, $1,481,200, 11.75 percent change. Amount required for, I'm sorry, the grand total for the 2018 debt service, 2017 budget and 2017 estimate, $3,868,500. 2018 proposed, $4,059,600, 4.94 percent change. Section 2, there is hereby levied a tax of $2,578,400 for all purposes, and $1,481,200 for debt service on all taxable property within the city of Lake Mills as returned by the assessor in the year 2017 for the uses and purposes set forth inside budget. Section 3, the city treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to spread this tax on the current tax rule of the city of Lake Mills. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage in publication. Thank you.
Okay. A couple things, and then I'll turn it over to Steve if he has anything else. For the public, this is the first of three readings, like every other ordinance in the city. And for those of you who like to look at budgets, if you want to see the current budget that we're working off of, you need to go to the work session on the website that we just had at 6 o'clock tonight. There is a copy of the current budget as we're seeing it on the council. So if you go to that website, you will see it right there for you. Everything is in front of you there. Just a reminder that when you talk about budget, that we are only one of five municipalities that are on your tax bill that when you get it in December. It includes the school district, the county, the Madison Area Technical College, and the state, as well as the city. So please be aware of that when you look at the price. I'm going to turn it over to Steve for comments about how we see it at the moment.
You'll note that the overall proposal for the tax increase is that while the levy went up, the average home will see a slightly smaller tax bill than they saw in 2017. That's because of increased assessed value throughout the community. We went from 462.9 million to 504.1. We went from, uh, four hundred and sixty-two-point-nine million to five hundred and four-point-one million and that made a substantial impact on, on how they had taxes are spread across the community. So as a whole, you may notice some sort of change. Depends on, you know, whether you've had some new billing, you know, whether you've had your home sold or you made some type of improvement to it. So, um, when you look at your taxes, you've probably noticed that it's not as substantial as it might have originally looked in the first proposal. Like I saw quite a bit of net new construction and, uh, increased assessed value. The budget here lays out the basic numbers. So if you look at the property tax, it went up one-point-four percent. And our, net new construction was one-point-eight-eight, so that, and then like we had discussed earlier, there are several other adjustments we can get, so that the total ends up being two-point-eight. But that's total revenues, so that's like state aids, transportation aids, um, revenues from other sources such as from the towns for fire protection and, uh, trailer fees and those types of things. So there's a lot of revenues included in here that gives us that two-point-eight percent. And you'll notice actually in the intergovernmental aids, that was where one of our largest increases was.
There may be changes between now and the third reading, right? But maybe, but not much, probably.
We have probably seen from September first to now, we'll prob- that's when we've seen the largest number of changes because, um, most of the state reports are now final. There's one outstanding state report and that's the equalization ratio. And you could calculate it from this spreadsheet here, um, because it's, it's the difference between the gross rate and the equalized rate, so it, it just gives you a percentage that you use to do a calculation on, on rates. So it's not, it's probably not as important and probably not why they don't get it out until just the day before November. Some of the other items are, like, right now we're having, um, open enrollment for insurance, health insurance. So, you know, some people go, they get married and they go to the family health insurance, so that makes a slight change in our health insurance. We are, we have three positions open, so we'll be hiring three new people here in the next several months. And so the, um, we don't know what they'll bring to the table as far as health insurance or other kind of conditions that we need to be able to bring them in. So it, uh, there could be some small changes, but they're gonna be really small, so... I don't know that we'll see any real significant impacts in the budget other than, than maybe some, um, you know, maybe the state tells us that they've reduced the transportation aids, but from my, from what I saw in the, in the legislative reports, that wasn't gonna be the issue. Or the issues are dark story issues, so... The expenses follow right along with the revenues. They're very consistent. They're still along the lines of what was in the city manager's budget address as far as assumed economic conditions, um, pay increases, uh, health insurance costs, and those types of things, so...
Okay. So we will see this again at our next meeting for the second reading?
Yes, you will.
And, uh, as of this moment, there's actually a decrease in the city rate, right?
Yes. The city rate will actually go down, the tax rate will go down from eight-three-three to eight-one-one.
Okay. And we'll see what it looks like in two weeks, okay? All right. Anybody else have something they wanna add about it at this time? Okay. Moving on to item C, the ordinance eleven eighty-one, twenty eighteen capital budget, first reading.
Ordinance eleven eighty-one, two thousand eighteen capital budget. An ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the year two thousand eighteen. The city council, the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, there is hereby appropriated out of the receipts of the City of Lake Mills for the year two thousand eighteen, including monies received from the general property tax levy to the various purposes specified in the capital budget presented herewith for the purposes therein stated, the following amounts. Two thousand eighteen capital budget. Total revenues for two thousand seventeen budget and two thousand seventeen estimate, two million seven hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred. Two thousand eighteen proposed, eight million three hundred fifty-two thousand two hundred. Total expenditures, two thousand seventeen budget and two thousand seventeen estimate, two million seven hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred. Two thousand eighteen proposed, eight million three hundred fifty-two thousand two hundred. Section two, there is hereby levied a tax of twenty-eight thousand three hundred for capital purposes on all taxable property within the City of Lake Mills as returned by the assessor in the year two thousand seventeen for the uses and purposes set forth in said budget. Section three, the city treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to spread this tax on the current tax rule of the City of Lake Mills. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect and be in a force, and be in a force from and after its passage and publication.
Thank you very much. So, um, Steve, do you have any comments on this section of the budget?
Um, the property tax portion is, is pretty small. So even though it increased a lot, it's not a significant impact on the levy. Probably the largest part is the grants, which are six million dollars and then the long-term borrowing, which is two-point-two million dollars. Uh, that's mainly South Main Street. And then our street maintenance program. And then there's some new capital equipment and you can go through the, the capital budget to see what those expenses are in relation to the long-term borrowing, but most of it is South Main Street and, and our street maintenance program.
Okay. And again, if people wanna see more specifically, they can go to the budget workshop that we just had for those, uh, exhibits on there for the most current.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else have something to offer or ask? Okay, move on to, um, eight D, the discussion, decision, and goal session meeting. I'm gonna pass that on to Mr. Foster who, as vice president, part of his job duties is to, um, make sure we do our goal sessions. So I'm gonna pass it to you.
So it looks like we are not a go anymore on our original date. Did anybody come up with any other dates? I know we didn't wanna go through a, a vote on this online, but what about a, a person that can be available for us? Are we gonna do this on our own or is there somebody still available?
There's someone who's planning on being there. I guess we have to figure out what dates we have available to us and then we can run and buy them.
Yeah. Now, my understanding that that person's like a branding manager?
Uh, they are marketing and they do, but they do strategic
Okay.
and goal-setting types of
Gotcha.
information.
Okay. So we're, we're pretty much shot for October. We really don't have any dates or times for October.
I just want to interject that we aren't on a specific timeline for this.
No.
It's taken us this long to get this far, but, uh, we do have a budget in front of us that we do have to do. We have, uh, city manager evaluation to do and so forth, so maybe we need to put it out a little bit farther out.
Yeah. Well, we do have a third... Actually, no.
Not in November and December.
No, we don't. And even if we put it out to January, I don't think that's an issue. Are we set on Tuesday night? Does that work best for everybody?
Got it saved.
Got it saved?
Well, we do end up running into other committees.
Yeah, we do and, you know, when I'm looking at this, like, January twenty-ninth, wait, no, that's a, what day is that?
It's a Monday.
That's a Monday, the thirtieth.
What about that?
January thirtieth, um, that is a fifth Tuesday in January, so it shouldn't mess up any committees or anything like that.
And we'll be done with the holidays and
Yeah.
all of that.
And we could start it earlier than, than seven, maybe a six.
We could do six or six.
If six works for everybody.
Can we even start at three?
Yeah. I won't be there, but I can, you can start at three.
Be there in spirit.
Can, can we look at that date as one of our options, Steve?
January thirtieth?
Yeah.
Now, I think there's been some discussion about whether or not we wanna do it ourselves or not.
Yeah, we talked about that, but if the person that Steve has does have strategic planning, um, in place, it wouldn't be bad to maybe get a fresh set of eyes on what we currently have and make sure we are going in the right direction. Otherwise, we could do it ourselves and we could follow the same format we have in the past. But it's always been the same person, so I think if that person does have the strategic planning and marketing and things like that, it might be beneficial to, uh, to listen to him and have him come in. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? You know, other than that date...
I don't see much else.
I don't see much else.
Mm-hmm.
Not on Tuesdays, anyway.
Then we'd have to move to Thursdays or something else.
Yeah. Oops. Thursdays. Come on, move.
Do we need to make a motion to that effect? No. Anybody have a problem with that date?
Yeah. Let's, let's see what we can do on that date and see if that's available. It should be out far enough that hopefully we won't conflict with anything else going on. If not, we'll have to make some other decisions, see how far out we go or if we go to a Thursday. Yeah, how many sessions did we do last time? We did two, didn't we?
Yeah.
This one isn't for three.
Pardon me?
This one is for three.
Why?
The one is to do the, go over the planning and goal-setting and, um, it incorporates staff. And then there's, um, kind of a finalizing of that. And then there is a, um, kind of what we see ourselves as, uh, 'cause it kinda leads to a brand, so...
What is a brand?
It's how you define you as a product, basically, how the city is a product to the community.
Like, uh, council?
Yeah.
Is that something we want?
I think so, because we do provide a, a service and...
You're gonna, you're gonna find that every, you know, every letterhead we have, our police cars, everything we have has some form of brand on it. And what we wanna do is get a consistent brand that's easy to use.
Yep.
So that I can put it on squad cars, I can put it on the water tower, I can put it on a letterhead, whether it's electric, parks, administration, and it's easy and it's clearly identifiable. That, for us, has been a struggle for as long as I've been here, even, you know, using it on your business cards. If you have a good, clear logo and we all use it.
Yep.
It makes it easy for all of us to present ourselves as a city of Lake Mills. And I think that's important. I know Steve's business has one.
So if we're looking at three dates, I think it would be better served if they were closer together.
Yeah, so we don't forget what we said at the last meeting.
Right. What about, what about Wednesday nights? What meetings or what committees are on?
It depends. It's usually available for me.
So like, if we went thirtieth, thirty-first, and the first of February, so that'd be a Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Generally, the consultants need a little bit of time to sort through the information and put it and organize it for each next meeting, so putting it that tight might be a little tough.
Okay.
I can check, but I know Steve wouldn't have been able to do that.
Okay.
Well, how about the thirtieth of January and then the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth of February? 'Cause that gives two weeks in between and, and those are Wednesdays.
Those are Wednesdays, yeah.
I don't know if those Wednesdays work for everybody.
Yeah.
Or we could, or we could shift it over to a Thursday, but then that at least gives you a two-week gap in between each meeting.
Yeah. I can make those dates work myself.
I think I can make them work.
Is your wife gonna be okay with the fourteenth?
Of February? Oh. [laughing] Let's go, let's shift it over to Thursdays. We just have a nap for getting holidays.
I buy her presents all the time.
Maybe we could go to February fifteenth and the first of March instead. That was shifted to a Thursday.
Yeah.
Is Thursday a bad night for people?
Not for me.
So the fifteenth and February and the first of March?
I assume that the Rock Lake, uh, management committee will be done and the multi-use committee should be pretty well wrapped up.
Okay. See if we can, hopefully get those dates locked in.
Okay.
And we'll go from, go from there, hopefully find out.
Do you wanna send us an email when you find out what, what's his name?
She, Erin.
Oh, it's a she?
Yeah, Erin. E-R-I-N.
Oh, I know. I just not put two and two together. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mike. Is there anything else from anybody you're gonna need to say? Okay. And, let's see, once, that takes us to item nine, recommendations for future agendas. I think we just did some of that. Anything that we wanna put on next month's agenda, next month, next two-week agenda besides the budget readings?
We have a resolution on donating for a woman to Mexico.
Oh. Okay.
I think that's the only other one that we have locked in right now, right?
And just the employee recognition.
Oh, yeah, the employee recognition.
Okay. All right. Seeing nothing else, um... Meeting is adjourned.